I would like to call the October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five City Council Regular Meeting to order. While everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Oh, excuse me. Roll call. I never get called, so I tend to forget it.
Are you here? Carrie?
Present.
Chilton?
Present.
Hetchings?
Here.
Nelson?
Present.
Parker?
Yes, I'm here.
Whackler?
Present.
Kincaid?
Present.
You have a quorum, sir.
If anyone's wondering what that is up there, that's for us old folks who don't hear very well, that's an amplifier for my hearing aids. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda?
I make a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda as presented.
A second.
And thank you, Mr. Chilton, for the second. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
September twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five City Council Meeting Minutes, Ordinance two thousand and twenty-five zero three one, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by eight thousand eight hundred dollars in the General Fund to Replace the Ploter at City Hall, Sponsored by the City Manager, Public Hearing on October twenty-ninth. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five zero three-two commending Sarah DeVold for her outstanding accomplishments and representation of Alaska on the national stage, sponsored by the mayor. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five zero three-three certifying the results of the October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five Regular Election, sponsored by the city clerk. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five zero three-four, Recognizing Vice Mayor Lisa M. Parker for her induction into the Alaska Women's Hall of Fame and her outstanding service to the citizens of Sedatna and the state of Alaska, sponsored by the mayor. Action Memorandum two thousand and twenty-five zero two-one, Request for an Excused Absence from the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Regular City Council Meeting. Ms. Whackler, that is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Anyone here in the audience wishing to comment on any of those items? And do we have anyone on Zoom? You say no? Having no one wishing to speak, the Approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Next on the item for me to do is I'm going to read portions of Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three-two, Resolution Commending Sarah DeVold for Outstanding Accomplishments and Representation of Alaska on the National Scene. Sarah's performance at Miss Alaska, Miss America's Team, two thousand and twenty-six, was historic as she achieved the position of runner-up, the first time in Alaska history that a representative has reached this level of national recognition. Sarah was unable to attend tonight, so the resolution will be forwarded to her by the city clerk. Next item. This is gonna take a long time. And this is a resolution recognizing Vice Mayor Lisa M. Parker for her induction into the Alaska Women's Hall of Fame and her outstanding service to the citizens of Sedatna and the state of Alaska. Whereas Lisa Maureen Maureen Parker has dedicated over fifty years to public service guided by her passion for helping communities grow while protecting the unique values that define Alaska. And whereas, a fourth-generation Alaskan, Parker has began her journey in public policy at age fourteen as a delegate to the National Close-Up Conference and later participated in the nineteen seventy-one White House Conference on Youth, where she represented young Alaskans on matters of race relations and legal rights. And whereas, Parker's distinguished public service career includes legislative work for the Alaska State Senate and House of Representatives and professional service to every Alaska governor, from Jay Hammond to Bill Walker. And whereas, at age nineteen, Parker was elected to the Anchorage Charter Commission, becoming the youngest person ever elected to public office in Anchorage and helping guide the unification of the city of Anchorage and the Greater Anchorage Area Borough. And whereas, throughout her career, Parker has demonstrated exceptional leadership across Alaska, including service as the first state coordinator for the Alaska Land Use Council, executive director of the Kukinut Regional Citizens Advisory Council, and the first female planning director for the Kenai Peninsula Borough. And whereas, Parker's efforts in responsible resource development, notably leadership on the Red Dog Mine Project, have created lasting economic benefits and set the standard for collaborative development practices in Alaska. Whereas, she has served in vital roles supporting environmental stewardship and community health, including founding membership in the Alaska Chaddix Corporation?
Chido.
Oh, Chido, okay. Leadership roles with the Kenai Watershed Forum, Blood Bank of Alaska, and Kenai Peninsula Food Bank, and decades of working advancing conservative, safety, and sustainable development. And whereas, Parker's contribution to higher education and governance were furthered through her service on the University of Alaska Board of Regents, where she was commended for her calm, compassionate leadership during times of fiscal challenge and her advocacy for rural and community campuses. And whereas, in Sedatna, Parker is serving her third term as a member of the City Council and currently as Vice Mayor, where she has been instrumental in shaping Sedatna's future through initiatives such as the creation of Sedatna Community Memorial Park, Sedatna Creek Park, the Sedatna Fieldhouse, and the Riverfront Redevelopment Project. And whereas, Parker has authored or supported key local legislation involving community health, sustainability, and recreation, including ordinances establishing the city lodging tax, banning smoking and eating establishments, and prohibiting the use of disposable plastic bags. And whereas, her commitment to cultural inclusion is reflective in her ongoing work with the Kanai'zi tribe to add Deanna names to Sedatna's community parks and facilities, recognizing and honoring the area's indigenous heritage. Whereas, Parker's leadership extends statewide through her services president of the Alaska Municipal League and on numerous boards, including the Resource Development Council, Alaska Humanities Forum, and Alaska Chamber of Commerce. And whereas, throughout her remarkable life and career, Parker has remained deeply grounded in family and friendships, maintaining close and enduring relationships with her siblings and cherishing the companionship of friends who have shared in both her personal and professional journeys. Whereas, Parker's strength, joy, and balance in life are sustained by the love and support of her husband of forty-five years, Steve Horn, and their son Nicholas Horn, with whom she enjoys traveling, fly fishing, and spending time together in the Alaska she so deeply treasures. And whereas, in recognition of her decades of leadership, integrity, and service to Alaska communities, Lisa Parker has been inducted into the Alaska Women's Hall of Fame, joining an esteemed group of women who have made lasting contributions to the state of Alaska. Now, therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Sedatna, Alaska. The City Council hereby honors and recognizes Vice Mayor Lisa M. Parker for her induction into the Alaska Women's Hall of Fame and expresses its profound appreciation for extraordinary contributions to the city of Sedatna and the state of Alaska. The City Council extends its heartfelt congratulations to Vice Mayor Parker, her husband Steve, their son Nicholas, and her extended family and friends in gratitude for the support, encouragement, and inspiration they have provided throughout her lifetime service. The City Council expresses its deep appreciation for Vice Mayor Parker's leadership, her steadfast commitment to Alaska and its people, and her enduring legacy as a role model for future generations of public servants, adopted this fifteenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-five. And congratulations.
Thank you.
We have done many, many years and many, many things for all of us.
Now you know everything about me.
Yep.
Okay, you have to turn.
Oh.
John.
Oh. You noticed we didn't put your birthday?
No, you didn't.
Hey. Reading that will take about most of the whole meeting. Next thing on the agenda is... Item number five, Public Comments and Presentations. What? Oh. Well, I don't know. We gotta think about that one. They're not new. They're kind of old. So, the next item is Seating of Newly Elected Council Members, which will be done by City Clerk Blankenship.
Would you like to join me after? Please, grace your way. I?
I.
David Kerry?
Lisa Parker.
solemnly, you solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the state of Alaska.
The laws of the state of Alaska.
And the laws, ordinances, and city of Sedatna.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Sedatna.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully. And impartially.
Form and discharge my duties.
Form and discharge my duties.
As councilmembers. To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am. Good. We had a good job. Close.
Next panel.
Okay, now I can move on to item number five, Public Comments and Presentations. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on anything not appearing on the agenda? Step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is William Raymaker, one twenty-one Farnsworth, Sedatna. Hi. Congratulations, Ms. Parker, on being inducted into the Hall of Fame. I thank you for your service for the community and the state, and thank you very much for living in our community. I'd like the councils to consider funding a public RV park. Currently, we've had two places in the city that has allowed us to dump RV dumps. Both have closed down within the city. In the spring, they actually closed down. So, we've kinda had to hunt and peck and find places to be able to dump. City of Homer has one. I know they like it quite a bit. They use it a lot. It's open through October. The local ones often close by the end of September, which leaves many of the hunters and fishermen to figure out what to do. There really isn't much of anything left. There's a few stations, but they closed down around the end of September. And I just would like you to consider funding a RV dump.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? I'm gonna kinda go ahead with Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Thank you. Compliment. Funding an RV dump station here in Sedatna, something the city manager and I have been discussing, and so maybe the city manager has thought to address it because we do realize it is something we need to address.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. In fact, tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, our city staff are meeting about the ice arena and also this topic as well. We recognize that we need one here in town. Well, we've been working with Fred Meyer. We were told by their corporate office they were going to bring their dump station back online, but it appears they're not going to. So, we'll continue to work with them, but we recognize that we do need another dump station here in town and possibly city-run as well. So, we are working on that, and thank you for bringing that forward.
There have been times in which I've dumped at Fred Meyer's that have been four-deep. So, it is a well-used, was a well-used facility. But once it went out, then it left quite a bit to be desired.
Correct. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Like I said, we are, the city is working on it, and hopefully we'll have a solution by next spring.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. Next item on the agenda is Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough? And yes, there are. Mr. Cox.
Tyson Cox, Assembly Representative for Sedatna for a few more days. I just have a few items from our meeting last night. Some of them you'll probably already be familiar with, but I think it's always good to mention them. The proposition number three did pass. That is the one that adds another twenty-five thousand dollars to the residential homestead exemption. And that will be, as of today, that will be for everyone who is resident that's qualified for it, whether you are a senior or not a senior. So, for those that are under sixty-five, it will be a seventy-five thousand dollar exemption that they can qualify for. And then if you're over, it would also be that, but you would be able to use that with the other three hundred thousand for being a senior. And there's also a couple, all those folks could also be eligible for a couple different ten thousand dollar ones. As of today, that is capped at three hundred and seventy-five thousand for any resident. So, the seniors would only get to go to that level. It's something that I sponsored as an amendment last night. It will be coming back. Ms. Cooper and the mayor sponsored an amendment that I changed to that their amendment was is to not have any cap at all because the original wording set up to three hundred and fifty thousand, which would then be a little bit of, it would be very awkward in the fact that we just put out to voters that you could go up to another twenty-five thousand dollars. And so, even though I think we need to very much watch what we do with exemptions because I don't know if they give the value that we may all, the people think they do. We should honor what people had voted on, and so it should be at least at three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, nobody would have been losing out on that, on that side of it. But it is up for reconsideration. Ms. Cooper asked for reconsideration at the end of our meeting last night. And so, it's very likely that that will come up again, and I'm mentioning it to you folks because I know right now the city doesn't go up that high on their exemptions, but it is good to know in case the city looks at any of those things or has ever, ever has a consideration of it. And I know, you know, you have to work very closely with the borough on all of your sales and personal property tax and all that. So, that was one of them. And then the other proposition that passed was moving the date to November. That is only for our borough elections to be at the same time as the state elections. I'm assuming that the city will now have to consider what their options are and what they want to do with that regarding, you know, using the machines and all that. And I'm sure Ms. Blankenship is already devising a plan for how to bring that up to you guys or whatever you guys are gonna decide. But I do think it's noteworthy to at least mention it here because that is definitely something that is gonna affect the city of Sedatna, no matter which way you go, whether you decide to keep it at the same date or change it as well. On our meeting, that was, that was the big part of our meeting last night. The only other thing I wanted to mention real quick is the mayor's office has put out on the KPB website, and I've seen it on Facebook a few times, just about our recycling because there's been a lot of questions on recycling. And I know it's not necessarily exactly a Sedatna issue, but it is an issue for all of us. But it says some of the things that have been added back. So, that's a good list there of what's been added back. The things that are still missing from Sedatna are, we're still not gonna be doing plastics at the moment, and we're still not going to be doing tin because it looks like Seward has tin, Homer does not. The other thing we're currently not gonna be doing at the Central Peninsula Landfill is paper and cardboard. I have, that's one of the ones I've been kinda pushing pretty hard is I would like to see us get that back. Even if it means, I mean, for me, even if it means bailing it and doing something with it that's a little more constructive than just throwing it all. I don't know. I just look at my own house and my neighbors, and there are a lot of boxes coming through the mail every day. And so, there's a lot of that going around. But anyways, if you wanna look at this one or if you go on the website, it will show you that, or if you have any constituents that ask about, I mean, I know it's not the city's thing to do, but I'm sure people ask about the landfill. Other than that, that's it for my report. If there are any questions, I would take any questions.
Mr. Chilton?
I'd just like to say thank you for the update on recycling. It was great news to hear that update from the mayor's office that they're gonna be bringing back the options to recycle those different materials at the local landfill. I know I've got a number of questions about that recently. One thing I did wanna raise, and I don't know if you have any ability to get some traction of this on the borough side, is when they pulled back the recycling program, they also removed the recycling collection bins over here by the borough building that I know a lot of Sedatna residents really appreciated. If they're gonna be starting to add these options back into the landfill, it'd be great to see if they could put those back into place, so a lot of residents could at least for recyclable materials and not have to drive all the way up out towards Skyview to do that.
No, I totally agree with you. I actually use that quite a bit myself for our recyclables at home. I will be inviting Mr. Truesdale up here in a minute, and he'll be the one that could go forward with that if that's something that he wants to try and tackle because I do think there's enough citizens around that have asked that. I've been asked that several times. So, I know that is something that is a concern of folks.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? I know I've been looking forward to recycling, and I hate pulling those bags of paper and just tossing them, but...
Yeah. As a side note, I have a huge, I have a ton of cardboard stacked up. I've been waiting to see if it's, if it's gonna come back or not, but...
Yeah. Glass is another one.
And before I go, I did want to congratulate Ms. Parker. We are very blessed to have you on our community, so thank you very much. And with that, if it's okay with the mayor, I'd like to invite up Mr. Truesdale. He'll be the new representative for the city of Sedatna and the outer areas for the Sedatna seat on the Borough Assembly. And so, if you have some questions or want to talk to him.
Hi, thank you, guys. And I'm really excited about the opportunity to represent District Four, which, as most of you know, is the city of Sedatna and some extending areas outside of the city limits. I personally live outside of the city limits for the last sixteen years, but prior to that, I did live in the city. And I know most of you. Interestingly enough, Mr. Kerry was my teacher. I was Campbell's principal for quite some time, and I've known several of you throughout my time, which has been my entire life in the community. So, I'm excited to collaborate and work together with all of you and certainly as constituents of my district, I would expect to hear from you if you had any things that you wanted me to personally tackle or bring up, like the recycle bins and so on. So, I'm open to that. I'm easy to get ahold of, and I will be here at your guys' City Council meetings to present, as Mr. Tyson has.
Any questions for Mr. Truesdale?
I'd just like to say congratulations on your election, and we look forward to working with you over the coming years. I'm sure Assembly Member Cox has filled you in on the structure of the reporting here. You have a dedicated spot every meeting, and it's been great to hear from him then. I hope you are able to carry forward that tradition, and don't be a stranger here, and I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
I offer you my congratulations, maybe sympathy at times, but you have some very big shoes to fill, and I look forward to seeing you in a productive term.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item is Public Hearings, Ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three-zero, Amending the Sedatna Municipal Code, Section one seven point one zero point three six five, Animals to Allow the Keeping of Chickens, Hens, in All Residential Zoning Districts Under Certain Conditions, and Chapter one point zero eight point zero eight zero Minor Offense Fine Schedule, Introduced by Mr. Chilton and Mr. Nelson. May I have a motion to enact?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to enact Ordinance two zero two-five dash zero three zero.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Report from Councilmember Chilton and Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just a little background on this and refresher. So, as you are all probably aware, this So just a little background on this and refresher. So as you are all probably aware, this was first brought to us this spring. We had a good number of members of our community who are present with us this evening, who came forward and had made their requests that we legalize the keeping of hens within city limits. What I would say is, as members of this council, I would generally assume that we're all very familiar with our city code, but we're not experts on it and we don't know every specific section in complete detail. And I was not aware that we did not already allow the keeping of chickens in residential districts because Keen Eye and quite a few other municipalities across Alaska do. As our code is currently structured, we do allow limited keeping of hens, but it's only within residential lots of one and a half acres or larger, which precludes the vast majority of our residents. So there is definitely a need there. Some of the reasons that we had this requested by the community included sustainability, for food, environmental, education. I know from my own perspective, I had been looking forward to eventually getting a couple of hens to, you know, do the whole educational process with my own child as he gets older. So again, sometimes you don't know things need to be fixed until they actually are affecting you. So having that brought before us, Councilmember Nelson and myself got to work on this in collaboration with some members of our community here, which I'm grateful for, as well as our city administration. And we're able to assemble this ordinance that we have proposed and put before you today. In doing so, we carefully referenced municipal code frameworks from other cities that have done this and done it successfully across Alaska. I know that there has been concern expressed about, you know, potential noise, predators, you know, this is a change. And there are things that I, I understand people being concerned about. But in the crafting this ordinance, I think that we were very diligent in finding a way to meet this need in our community and do it in a way that strikes a reasonable balance to address those. So you'll see that as this is proposed before you, we do have reasonable restrictions on quantity. So we're keeping it at six. We're strictly prohibiting roosters. There's rules that address setback requirements, ethical keeping of animals with COOP standards. So I believe this is reasonably crafted in a way that meets this need and will be compatible within our community. With that completed, we did take this before our Planning and Zoning Commission, as required by our city code, at the September 3 P&amp;Z meeting. And I would say I was actually kind of surprised by how well supported this was. It got the, the resolution supporting it passed unanimously with our planning and zoning body, lots of public support on it. Actually, we had a couple Planning and Zoning Commissioners that mentioned potentially increasing the limit on chickens. We decided, let's just leave it as is and let's see how this goes and we can always address that in the future. I think this is a great starting point. So again, this isn't something new. We're not reinventing the wheel here. This has been done at other municipalities. I'm really excited to see this brought forward into our city and I look forward to seeing your support tonight and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Nelson, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chilson, for that report. I have nothing significant to add. I will just second that even though a lot of those concerns have been raised on, on some different issues like noise, I think that the ordinance is crafted to consider all, all points of view. And I think also that many of us know anecdotally that this has already been happening in the city. So making this something that has some good boundaries on it and getting rid of that restriction, I think is a, is a very good way to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would wish to speak on Ordinance 2025-030?
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Natalie King. My address is 163 Sierra Heights Street, right near Reedout Elementary. So right in town. We are so excited to hopefully be able to have chickens. We also were very surprised when we found out a few years ago that we could not have chickens. So we kind of got started with this whole process. We would just love to remind everyone that talking about concerns, we always get noise brought up and we like to compare it to six chickens is as loud as a dishwasher. It goes about at the same decibel level as a dishwasher. And so very little complaints. We are excited more for all the benefits that Mr. Chilson talked about. And it's exciting. We have children. They would be so, they would have so much fun learning how to take care of chickens, getting that extra responsibility. So we're excited for the whole process. Thank you so much. I think we're going to have another couple of people share a little bit, but we are excited for your support. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone on the council? Seeing none. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Latisha Holly. I live at 170 Anthurium Street here in Sedatna. Can you hear me now? Good evening. My name is Latisha Holly. I live on 170 Anthurium Street here in Sedatna. And congratulations on reelection as well as your service. So I'm here to support the chicken allowance and within the city limits. I also want to address the broader concern of predator safety. I know that this was a big concern last time we presented this for you. Currently, the city of Sedatna does not have a predator deterring ordinance in place. Instead of restricting our pet options, I urge the city to focus on community-wide predator-safe practices. These include addressing the higher attractants on the list, such as barbecue grills, garbage cans, and fish waste. And also pet food that's unsecured. This includes all pet food, including dogs and cats. Managing these attractants has been proven by the Alaska Fish and Game to significantly reduce predator visits in all residential areas. I appreciate your consideration and your time on this, and that's all I have to say.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance 2025-030? And please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Amy Cassidy and I live at 124 Henrich Circle, or Heinrich if you're German. And I just have, just word of mouth, just been talking to a lot of people. And I'm not sure how much this testimony matters since I don't have anything backed up. But lots of friends, lots of community members at schools, churches, public activities that have been provided by the borough. And I beg on education, beg on involving our kids on educational experiences. And I've actually never heard anyone oppose the idea of chickens, only expressed surprise that they haven't been allowed. I'm pretty happy with the idea of the level of noise, considering I wouldn't be able to hear them over the gravel pit up the road and the helicopter that's often flying from the hospital. I think it's extremely acceptable and only a benefit to the community. And that's all.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance 2025-030? Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Ethan Van Babel, 338 Banner Lane. I'd like to thank the sponsors of the resolution for putting together what I think is very reasonable and beautifully simple and great resolution. Fully support, fully support its adoption. Think it'd be great, not only for my family, but for many families in the city as well. I was, towards the beginning of this whole process, concerned that it would end up being a very complicated redo of, of, of the ordinance with a lot of, a lot of unwieldy prescriptions. Pleasantly surprised when I, when I read the final product. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Anyone else here in the audience wishing to speak on Ordinance 2025-030? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there on Zoom. Having no one else wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the individuals that came forward. One of the many benefits of this I see is, as we go out and we teach in the schools, often we get an opportunity in terms of how does government work. You have provided us the most excellent example of a way in which members of the public can come forward with a desired outcome and see it go through. I was extremely pleased to hear that it was not unduly cumbersome in terms of getting it forward, which again, often people are afraid to get involved with government that they do will take so long, it'll be so complex. So to hear that this was not, speaks I think well to those who sponsored this, as well as to the city administration. And so I want to thank you that this, again, is something that can very easily be explained to, I'm going to say, younger children in schools in terms of how you can affect and how you can, and I won't say make a law, but you can put into effect a program. And the last thing I just want to mention, and just my own stick humor, when I heard about, mention of the chicken allowance, what came to mind to me was, oh, we're going to pay him so much each week for being a chicken in our yard. But again, I know that's not what the allowance is. But again, when I heard that chicken allowance, I wondered how much it will be. I thank you for the work that you've done and I anticipate the council is going to approve this. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council?
Well, I'm going to tell you, I grew up with chickens and I hate them. I was the one that had to clean the chicken coops and I know what the smell is. I'm not so worried about the noise, but the predators are a big concern of mine. I really liked it when it was an acre and a half, because I look at the city of Sedatna, which is a very small city. You have lots that are 70 feet wide and 140 feet deep. And by the time you get through doing your offsets and whatever else, you don't have much room for the chicken coop. And you certainly don't have much room for the odor, and trust me, there is odor, to dissipate. And what's going to happen when you have six houses in a row and everybody wants their own chicken coop? I'm just totally, totally opposed to it. And the other thing is, who's going to enforce? Who's going to police it? Who's our, is that what our police department is going to be doing is counting chickens? Because a neighbor gets upset because somebody's got seven chickens. And the other thing is, is if I have a really nice home sitting on this lot that is 10 feet off of each side, because if you've got a, a 70-foot lot, you're only going to have 50 feet to build your house, because you have to have the 10-foot offset. And I don't think I want a chicken coop in the yard next door, because I feel like it's going to devalue my home. So I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Vice Mayor Parker. Or Mr. Chilson?
Thank you. I, I do appreciate the feedback on that and I do understand some of the concerns with that. Just addressing a couple of those, I know the, the point about enforcement of this, we do specifically have a section in our zoning code referring to unlawful keeping of animals, as well as new violations pertaining to the keeping of chickens. We do have an animal control officer on staff who does an excellent job of controlling the city and enforcing existing animal-related code. And I have full confidence that they will be able to expand their existing duties to encompass the code changes that we're reviewing here tonight. And the last thing I would just say that, you know, city code is an evolving thing. We don't necessarily have to stick with this as it is being proposed to the council tonight if we find this doesn't work. But what I do know is that our community has spoken, and this is something that is of very important value to our community. And I, through my participation in these meetings to date, have really heard no opposition to it, barring the comments that you just presented. So I, I still do fully support this, but I would say that, you know, it's going to be a learning process. And if we can get this passed tonight and, you know, we see how this goes over the next year or two, we have the possibility to come back and roll it back if we find that this was just a bad decision and just not compatible with the city of Sedatna. Or we find out this is really a non-issue and people love it and maybe they want a couple more, or maybe they want ducks. Who knows where this could go. But let's just start small here and I, I think it's a reasonable way to start. And we can always, like any other ordinance, we can come back and modify it if we need to. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Councilmember Chilson answered the question I had.
Any other comments, Ms. Michael?
I agree with Jordan. I think it's, because there is a lot of public that wants this, I think it's kind of one of those situations where, let's see what happens. The community should be aware that laws can change. And if things go awry, then I think that that will definitely come to the council. If you have neighbors that are complaining, if you have neighbors that start coming to the council and saying, hey, we don't want this, then it's going to be brought back to the council for discussion. So I think the community of chicken owners needs to be aware that this is a moving target. And let's, let's see, if we have increased predation, if we have increased neighbor complaints, then we're going to hear from, from people. So yeah, I'm in support of it and let's do it.
Anything else from the council? Ms. Hutchings.
I keep hearing that we can come back and change it, but after somebody has built their coop and put all this money into it, then you're going to be telling them, oh, nope, we changed our mind. I think that's the wrong way to go about it. And I just, I really think the acre and a half is a great way to do it. Because, to be honest with you, I don't think that many people have, are really aware of this ordinance coming forth. And you might have more people here than you know. And to try and change it after the fact, I don't think is going to work.
Anything else? Just one quick comment. I mentioned it the last time. My daughter had chickens here in the city for many, many years. And they were all next door to Mr. Nelson. And I don't remember him ever making any complaints about it. And I don't think we're going to see a huge increase in the number of people inside the city limits that are going to say, I'm going to become a chicken farmer. I just don't see that happening. There may be a few, but I don't, I don't expect to see a huge influx. So at this point, we will call for the vote.
Hutchings? No. Nelson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes, one no vote?
Ordinance 2025-030 passes on a 5-1 vote. Next item on the agenda is number eight, new business, and that was all under the consent agenda. So moving along to mayor council reports, mayor's report and proclamations. You read the ordinance, the resolutions earlier. Congratulate to those people that received those, those resolutions. Job well done. I did attend the Keen Eye Chamber of Commerce auction the other day. And a very nice event and a good turnout. Next item, council reports on boards and commissions, and there are none. Moving on to city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I do have an October 2 Plan, sorry, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board report.
Okay.
Can I go ahead and just run through that? Oh, thank you, sir. So on our October 2 Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, the body addressed a number of issues, first of which was an update to the fee schedule. One of the changes they're going to be doing is they've reviewed the fees that have been established for the fieldhouse and they're going to be restructuring those or recommending restructuring of those fees to basically incorporate sales tax into the fees. This is going to make it easier for people attending the fieldhouse to just basically pay, okay, this is going to be a $5 drop-in, not $5 and X amount of cents to go with it for taxes and makes it easier for staff as well. Other minor changes include some small increase in costs for material services like firewood. And so far, the board was very receptive to these as they were presented. And I suppose we'll probably be seeing something off of that come forward to us in the near future. Additionally, Vice Mayor Parker has put together a draft policy to guide the city on how we would be naming facilities and parks moving forward. It's historically not something that we've had a formal policy for, and it's kind of been the Wild West in the past. And the idea of putting together a proper framework so we have consistency in how we handle this moving forward was presented through this policy to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and it was very well received. So I thank Vice Mayor Parker for putting this together. I think it's going to be a valuable asset to the city if we can establish that. And then additionally, Director Todd presented a number of updates that are going on with the Parks and Recreation Department and how things have gone through the summer. So far this year, campgrounds are overwhelmed. That was one thing they really struggled with. We had a, just a surge of people coming through the city with the increased fishing in the community. They did a great job with keeping them going, but it was definitely a pretty large strain on staff. And I think that's something we'll have to likely look at through staffing next year. I know that they were trying to fill a couple of positions. at through staffing next year. I know that they were trying to fill a couple positions, so hopefully we can get that done, stabilize the apartment, and be well set up to address the same level of load next year if it continues on that trajectory. Additionally, you know, we have a number of large events that have been held. The sports complex, we had the 4H Ag Expo and the ice arena that went well again. And then they've already had a number of large events in the fieldhouse, including, sorry, I'm losing my list here, but I know there's a couple of them that were a pretty good success over there. But speaking of the fieldhouse, things are going well with its first month of use. They're seeing pretty good growth on attendance there. Just in that first month, I think they noted there's something like 339 seniors that were using the walking track and continuing to grow, so that's exciting. And then lastly, we had a lot of discussion about summer ice. So as you recall, historically, we didn't offer summer ice. So it was something we had a lot of community interest in in the last year or two. And starting this year, they did extend the, the duration, which they provide summer ice in the community. There was some concern initially about the cost of doing so, as well as potential damage to the building. In retrospect, now that we've done our first summer with this, they're able to tabulate a total cost of roughly about $23,000 to extend the ice season, and they made most of that backup in fees, although there were a couple thousand short. So it didn't fully pay for itself, but it did get close. Additionally, they did see some condensation in the sports center, and I know that there is going to be some additional work to evaluate the capabilities of that building to host ice in the summer. As you know, the, the city did contract a firm to come in and do a full evaluation of the compressor system there and the ice rink, and we know it's a very aged system that we'll likely have to look at replacing here in the near future. However, that study did not incorporate evaluation of the effects of humidity on the building. So my understanding is that we have engaged engineers who are going to be coming back and evaluating dehumidity, dehumidification needs for the building to address if there's maybe additional equipment we need to put in to dehumidify it, or if it's fine operating as it is. But of course, the last thing we want to do is, as a side effect of offering summer ice, rot our building and rust it. So got to take care of the assets that we have. And that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Chilton? Saying no? Thank you. I did forget a couple of things. October 24th, I believe is Saturday, next week is the Chamber, Saldatna Chamber of Commerce pie auction at the fieldhouse. And I, we still have one opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so if anyone has any suggestions or anybody that would like to serve on that, please have them contact the city clerk's office for application and move ahead on that. And we also, if we still have a little bit of time left to find someone to be on that youth thing, youth conference at the last municipal league in December, we're looking for youth that are 18 to, I believe, 21, 25?
That's 24.
24? Okay. So if you know any youth in the 18 to 24 age bracket that would be interested in attending something that has to do with political and government in the state of Alaska, that would be an event that will be coming up. I believe it starts on December 7th or December 8th, something like that. And then just contact either the city clerk's office or the city manager. Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the gentleman testified about the RV dump station, that is something that we've been talking about and the need for a dump station here in Saldatna. There is a dump station in Sterling at Three Bears. However, we want people to stop in Saldatna. And we also know and have heard of that sometimes if there isn't a dump station, people will find a place to dump, and it's not where you want them to dump. So we are actively looking at that, not sure what the outcome will be. We really are trying to encourage Fred Meyer to reopen again. It was very successful. Yes, there was a long line, but during that timeframe, people took the advantage of shopping. So we do like that option as well. So we'll continue to work on that, and I'll report back to you. At the same time that we didn't have the dump station, the two dumps, RV dump stations in the parks have failed. They are 40-year-old cribs, and they no longer work. So those have failed. So we're also working on that for the RV parks. And thank you, Mr. Chilton, for the report on the ice arena. That really encapsulates everything. As you know, there was a part that, the, the ice arena was closed for several days. There were a part that failed at the ice arena, and ironically, it's not really part of the compressor system. It was part of the ice system, and it's not one of the 40-year-olds. It's 24-year-old system. The part, I originally told you that it was being shipped to Alaska and would be here in a few days. There is not a part for it any longer, so they have made a part for it and a retrofitting, and the ice arena is functioning as it should. And we are, again, meeting tomorrow. We have meetings on our plan to address this and come forward with a recommendation. Along with that, there is going to be the November 12th work session regarding the legislative priorities, and one of the priorities is the ice arena. However, we know that options for obtaining funding right now are pretty slim and hard, so we will have other options. Not by that work session. I had previously spoke of, I think it would be February, and so that's the timeframe that we are on at this time, unless we have an accelerated timeframe, and we're talking about that in our meetings as well. The, Jordan spoke of the staffing at the, within Parks and Rec, and then the additional staffing needed, probably, if we have a summer that we did this year, additional staffing for next year as well. And we also have a critical need for our staffing within our police department, and an idea that I will credit to the police department, the chief and his command staff. I don't know if you've seen it yet, but the city of Kenai has a website, I think it's join kenipd.com or something like that. It's a really vibrant, interactive website that displays a lot of information about the police department. Great idea. Laura from, my assistant, is wonderful with websites and everything, but with websites, and she took that idea and is running with it. So we are creating a website. I'm not quite sure of the domain yet. I don't know that that's been decided, but it has to be decided soon. And also, we are working with Martin Media to take photos of the department and their activities, anything that the chief and the department wants to focus on that would be bring staffing to the department. So yesterday, Joel and I spoke about the possibility of also a website for the Parks and Rec department. So a lot of what he hires is seasonal and temporary, which sometimes is hard to do, hiring for those positions. We want to show how vibrant the department is and how much fun it would be to be a temporary appointment, a seasonal employee, and how much they're needed. So we're working on those two departments specifically to really try to capture people in another way. So that's going on, and we're pretty excited about those two. There are other ideas that are being worked on for police department, police officer staffing, so those will come forward at a different time. And I believe that's all I have this evening, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for the city manager? Well, moving on to the next item on the agenda is number 11. Public comments? Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on any item? Going to double dip tonight, huh?
Tyson Cox-Saldatna. I was just going to mention, because the mayor had mentioned earlier about the conference for young adults, and I was just going to talk a little bit about it, because how important it is, is my son, when he was the student representative, he did turn 18 throughout the year, so he was able to attend that. And I will tell you, for one, that was the first professional, like, kind of event he was able to attend, especially without any of us around, his parents around. And it really impacted him a lot. I, it, it was phenomenal, because he got to meet a lot of people that were within our state, officials within the state. But the bigger part was, is to see some of these other kids that were, and I say kids, but young adults, that were in their probably mid-20s and already into college, and a lot of them going into politics as their career. Not necessarily what my son wanted, but he did want some of that experience. And, you know, I can't directly say it's why he did what he did now, but he, you know, he currently is the student body president at the university that he's at. He, he was, last year, he was an at-large member of that student body. But those are the types of things that I would say some of, not just serving here, but also going to that encouraged, to see some of these other young adults doing those kinds of things. So I guess I would, first off, encourage Campbell to please take that back to your council, if anyone is of age that can do that. And then if there are some that are of ages, you know, I would encourage, even if the city had any, any sway to go and talk to those kids during that class, because I know they have a class, my daughter's in that class, so they have a class that's during the day for their student council. But I just think there's a lot of power in that to say, you know, this is what we have going on, this is cool, or maybe put it on the website or something, something to encourage some of these kids to have the availability to go, something like that, because it was pretty powerful. He came back and there was, he was like, man, I didn't, he, he was just amazed that, that young adults in their 20s are doing these things. He's like, I didn't know that's what, you know, I didn't know you could do that. I'm like, yeah, of course you can. Anyways, that's all I have. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Don't leave. If you have anyone that you might think of or know of, please forward that information to us or have them contact us.
I will tell my wife about it so that she can talk about it. But other than that, you know, she knows some of the kids, but definitely she doesn't know all the kids that are involved with, I just figured that class would be a good one, because there are already kids that want to be involved in the political world, at least of the school.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, Tyson. And again, thank you for all the time on the assembly that you served us. I would encourage students that are 16, 17 years old, if there's an interest, to make the application and say, you know, you say it's 18, but I believe that I have the wherewithal to participate and be a valid, valid participant in this process. I mean, I started going to meetings and kind of challenging a long time ago, and I wasn't 18 years old. So if there is that interest, and Campbell, if you're interested or know of others who are 16, 17, and might want to attend, encourage them to reach out. And I would work with them to try to get them into the process.
I thank you for that. I just assumed it was, because the mayor had said 18, so I assumed that was their cutoff for that.
Never, 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 ever say that just because it says that, that you can't say, could you make an exception in my case?
Well, and especially if a Hall of Famer was the one to go and say that. I think, I think we'd get a little bit of clout.
The only issue with that is you have an age requirement. They're still considered a juvenile. And there would be, who's going to be the chaperone for them? And is it going to be the parents, or what?
Right.
Attending that type of a conference away from home.
No, and, yeah, and I'm not sure, because I know Quinn, he turned 18 at the beginning of his senior year. And so when he was here, it was his senior year, and he was able to, to participate, because he was already 18.
And, and what, what may have been in the past is somewhat changed now in this day and age. It becomes quite an issue when we're talking about younger adults.
Agreed. Thank you.
Oh, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? And looking at Zoom, we have no one there. Next item, council comments. We'll start with Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. No comments tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Kincaid?
Hi. I will definitely bring that up to first my city council, well, not my city council, my So High Student Council. And I'll see if I can get it out to the school as well, because I won't be 18 yet. I'm turning 18 two weeks after that. But I can see if I can get anybody who's interested, or if we can be able to get someone with a chaperone who'd be interested. Things that are going on, we don't have much during this time. We have, I know our student council currently is working on a new tradition of a Halloween carnival for younger kids, and they will be joining with the choir program where they have a haunted hallway, and it'll be very fun. And we're going to do that on Halloween. Our sports, our football is going to their state championship this week. I'm pretty sure they're playing this week. Our swim is going to be at Palmer. Our volleyball has their senior night this weekend, if you guys wanted to attend. And our cross-country team gets the chance to go to regionals in Spokane in November, which is very exciting. I wanted to congratulate Vice Mayor Parker on everything you do. It's very inspiring, and I hope to do more in the future like that, but maybe not quite in government, but I'm still deciding. Yeah, thank you.
And, and we have a new guest in the building kind of fluttering around there. I'm not quite sure where it went to. Must be after the chickens. Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I do want to congratulate our two new council members, our new old council members. And old, not in age, but in the fact that you've been here for a while. And congratulations, Lisa, also on your, you now can sit next to my mom up there for that great award. And other than that, I have no comments.
Ms. Whackler?
No comment.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. It was interesting to listen to the issue of the senior tax exemption. Forty-seven years ago, while I was on the assembly, it came up, and there was quite a bit of discussion, again, whether or not government should do that. And at the time, what was very nice was that the state of Alaska was going to pay the entire amount that the borough would not receive. And it made it pretty easy to vote for a new benefit that the state was going to pay for. It lasted a few years for the state. Again, I couldn't, it's sort of like the reimbursement on bonded debt for schools. Again, after a while, it's 80% and 80% of 80%. However, what I really want to speak to particularly, we had almost no senior citizens that could live here. It was very difficult economically to be here. And I'll say in the 70s and the 80s. And if you look at today, I believe that the senior property tax exemption is one of the primary factors which has allowed those of us now, us that are older, to stay here and to live here. It is a huge quality of life issue. And it used to be always, relatively speaking, if you want to go visit grandparents for that, you always had to go outside. This is so much, and again, it was wonderful back then, but this is so much nicer of a community with those people who are eligible for the senior exemption to stay here, to get to help in the, the raising and the nurturing of their children and their grandchildren. A huge amount of what, again, the hospital, which is a huge economic engine for this whole area, huge amount of that is because of the seniors who have different needs. And again, this is such a wonderful hospital, takes care of so many things. And so again, I just want to say, it's, it's interesting. One of the things that was mentioned tonight was the evolution of things. And so again, 40 years ago, the evolution of, should senior citizens have a tax exemption on property? Well, we don't know, but if the state's going to pay for it, we, it's okay. Now, we're seeing we're actually voting ourselves, and it's overwhelming, yes, in terms of we want property tax exemption, different things. And so I'm just really pleased to, to watch the evolution of, of our, our state and our government, our local. And just the last thing I just want to say, as a 16-year-old that served on the city council, I agree with young people getting involved, and it does help them stay involved.
Going back in the old days, there also used to be the pioneer benefit, which went away. Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Couple, couple things. One, I want to thank the voters in the city of Saldatna for re-electing me to the Saldatna City Council. It was interesting to look at the voting
It was interesting to look at the voting results, not only for Soldatna, the borough, but on a statewide basis. And people complained that there was a low voter turnout. There was a low voter turnout on a statewide basis. You look at Palmer, who had five candidates running for city mayor, and there was less than 10% of the voters that turned out. And across the state where we had competitive elections going on, the voter turnout was not good, and that's, that's been the trend. And with the, what the voters did at the borough level saying they want to move to November, we did get a note from our city clerk about this voting and, and how we proceed at the city level, and my note back was, I hope that we move forward, but before we move forward, let's have, let's have a discussion, let's have a work session to talk about this so that it's something that, you know, we can only, because of the Open Meetings Act, we can only talk to, to other people. So you can't really have a discussion, but if we have a work session to talk about it, to talk about the options and what's the best way to move forward, we're having a discussion, and maybe people in the community will also be involved and, and want to participate in that discussion as well. So there's that. Last week, Glenn Farn, who is going to be the developers of the Alaska LNG project, had a meeting in Nikiski. I was there, the city manager, there was, I don't know, from 100 to 200 people that were in attendance, and they were answering questions, talking about moving, moving forward. It's a three-phase process right now, with phase one of the project being building a gas pipeline from the North Slope to Matzoo and connecting into the existing pipeline system that we have that surrounds Cook Inlet. And then phase two would be with an LNG project, and phase three is the gasification on the North Slope. So one of the things we did talk with the folks at Glenn Farm about is getting together and having a meeting with the cities, and this would be the city of Kenai, the city of Soldatna, the city of Homer has said they'd like to participate, city of Seward, because should this project move forward, potentially port facilities in Seward could be used to bring in materials. And of course, there's the Kenai Peninsula Borough that would also be part, but we need to have this community meeting so that we as communities are prepared when the project goes forward to deal with the impacts that will be associated with this. You know, our police department could be busy. So there, there was that. And thank you, Mayor Whitney, for the resolution this evening, and it was an honor to be nominated by my friend Judy Brady. Some of you may know Judy. She's been involved for a long time, former commissioner of Department of Natural Resources and was executive director at the Alaska Oil and Gas Association for many years as well, and it was Judy that nominated me for the Women's Hall of Fame. And my final comment is, good luck, stars, may you win up in Colony.
And that resolution's already written. Mr. Chulson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies, I'm normally pretty concise, but tonight I got a small list. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Vice Mayor Parker on being accepted into the Alaska Women's Hall of Fame. It was really impressive to hear Mayor Whitney kind of go through the whole list with the resolution, and I just want to share a quick story about that. A couple of years ago, when I did my first winter AML trip down to Juneau, Vice Mayor Parker was kind enough to give me a very excellent tour of the state capitol, and it was just very impressive as we were going through that. She knew everything about that. Oh, this is history on that, and I did this and this and this, and it's just her whole history just ingrained throughout that whole tour, and learned a fantastic amount, but it just really spoke to how much she has contributed to our state throughout her career. I would say, again, congratulations on the election. I look forward to serving with you in many years to come in the council, but if you ever decide to get out of local politics, you have an excellent career as a tour guide for the state capitol. Secondly, the chicken ordinance, I'd like to say thank you for everyone's support on that this evening, and then also to everyone that came out to voice support for that. Third comment pertaining to the fieldhouse, my, my wife and my child and I have been really enjoying that facility since it's open, doing the toddler turf time. My wife is doing footsall. One thing I would like to see considered for additional capital improvements to that building, though, is potential inclusion of exercise equipment. So the city of Kenai with their recreation center have basically a very low-cost community gym, and I think there's a lot of opportunity with the walking track with our fieldhouse to potentially stage exercise equipment up there around the track on some of the nooks. So I would love to see us potentially invest in that in an upcoming capital improvement cycle and offer low-cost exercise equipment to our community, just like the city of Kenai does. And then lastly, Tyson, I would just like to thank you for your time serving the city of Soldatna on the assembly. You have always thoroughly impressed me with your level of detail in the reports that you provide us, just the ability to come here almost every single meeting and present to us. We didn't always have that before you held that seat, and I really appreciate the diligence to our community that you have exhibited through your time in that office, and I wish you well, and of course, you won't be a stranger, we'll see you around, but maybe in a couple of years, we see you run again if Sarge decides to get off. Otherwise, enjoy your time and just thanks again.
Actually, we need a coffee concession in the fieldhouse. I've mentioned that a few times, but, okay. Next item on the agenda is executive session, and there is no reason for one tonight. Next item pending legislation is ordinance 2025-015 and ordinance 2025-017, which will come up again for public hearing on February 25th, 2026. Next item, meeting announcements, the October 20th, 2025 Library Advisory Board Meeting has been canceled, and October 29th, 2025 is a regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM. Seeing nothing further on our agenda, we are adjourned.